Okay, if we can come to order, please. Welcome to the February 11th meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Hiller, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I decided to do this for myself this evening, really thinking on where we are. We are in some tumultuous times. Lots of things are happening. It's a lot of stress for all of us, elected officials, staff, community members, all doing our best. Sometimes we stumble, but I'm really proud truly of how we, each and every one of us, have spoken up and stepped up. With that, I decided to hang on to the invocation spot for myself this time. It always means a lot to me, and I settled on sharing the lyrics of a song that I think most of us know well. Whether you get your guidance, or inspiration, or peace from Mother Mary or another source, I think the message is timeless. With all due credit to the Beatles, "Let It Be." When I find myself in times of trouble, Mother Mary comes to me, speaking words of wisdom, "Let it be." And in my hour of darkness, she's standing right in front of me, speaking words of wisdom, "Let it be." Let it be, let it be, let it be, let it be. Whisper words of wisdom, "Let it be." And when the broken-hearted people living in the world agree, there will be an answer, "Let it be." For though they may be parted, there is still a chance that they will see, there will be an answer, "Let it be." And when the night is cloudy, there is still a light that shines on me, shine until tomorrow, "Let it be." I wake up to the sound of music, Mother Mary comes to me, speaking words of wisdom, "Let it be." Whisper words of wisdom, "Let it be."
Thank you.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Baldivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Let it be, here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay. Thank you. Add a late addition to our agenda that nobody has on their paper right now, but since we don't have any presentations this evening, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Ms. Wilson, formerly with Safe Streets, would you come forward and bring the gentleman with you? I ask if you will introduce yourself and the gentleman with you and proceed with what you pass.
Okay. I'm Judy Wilson, and I'm a member of the City Academy Ambassadors, and of course I work with our neighborhood as well. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our president, City Academy Ambassador, Derek Carmichael.
Thanks for having me, Mayor, councilmembers. As I mentioned, I am the president of the City Academy Ambassadors. I thought we were on the agenda this evening, but I guess we didn't make it, so I will keep it brief. I just want to speak briefly about the Citizens Academy and the ambassadors program. To many of where the Topeka Police Department does do the Citizens Academy twice a year, it gives great insight into the officers, the staff, and the department as a whole. Our ambassadors are members that have graduated from that program. The great thing about us, that's the only thing we require, is to graduate from the Citizens Academy at the Police Department. That gives us a great cross-section of the Topeka and Shawnee County population. There are people of all walks of life. We've been working with artists, government employees, business owners, city council members even. A lot of people ask me what our purpose is. Our main goal is to be, enhance the relationship between the department and the members of our community, as well as to provide service that contributes to the well-being of our community. We do that by volunteering in things such as the TPD trunk-or-treat, the get-down-and-get-dirty, and the Special Olympics Kansas Polar Blunge. We offer financial support to the Pipe and Drum Corps, Honor Guard, as well as the Citizens Academy I mentioned before. We also support the officers as far as promotions, retirements, and recruit graduation. In addition to that, we have monthly meetings with law enforcement and members of the community to help spark involvement of our members in the community and law enforcement. It's been a great asset since I've been here in Topeka, just a little over three years All this is impossible without our board. That's the one thing. I'm going into my second year as president. I could not do any of this, help get any of this together without my board members. It truly is a great group of people that committed to three years to be on the board for a maximum of two terms, and that is one of the reasons why I'm here tonight. As I mentioned, we have a city council member as a member, as well as a board member, Spencer Duncan, served six years as a board member, so two full three-year terms. His insight, both with ambassador business and outside, has been great. So what we want to do as ambassadors is offer him, we are calling our token of appreciation, if I may.
Stand forward.
Thank you. This is a very small motion of appreciation for your years of service, not just as an ambassador, but as a council member and as a member of our community. You are a great asset, and I'm glad to have met you. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, obviously, thank you for that. I did go through the program. I encourage every citizen, even if you, I think it's good for everybody. I will say that the department will answer any question you have. They're happy to engage in any conversations of concern about the department in those programs. I think that's the healthy, very healthy piece of that program, which is why I served on the board to continue that open dialogue with citizens and bridge those gaps between the Police Department and the public and also support the department as we could. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. It's good to see that participants don't just go to the academy and then walk away from it. They've actually formed themselves into a group, organized group now, with a board and a president, and they continue to be advocates and ambassadors for the city of Topeka, not just for the Police Department. So, it's appreciated, your service. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to Madam Clerk, the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Robert Burquist to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board to fill a term ending February 11, 2027. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Adeya Banke to Adeya Baio to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending February 11, 2027.
Okay. You've heard the appointments as read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Duncan, I mean, Cal?
Whatever.
D, second by Councilwoman Hiller.
Let it be.
Okay. We'll have to take a roll call vote.
Sure. Councilmembers Dobler.
Yes.
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 Hiller.
Yes.
Baldivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Robert Perez, allowing and approving city expenditures for period October 26, 2024 through November 29, 2024, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Robert Perez, naming banks and savings institutions that are designated as depositories for all city of Topeka accounts, and authorizing signatories and rescinding city of Topeka Resolution 9555. B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Robert Perez regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance for Hotel Topeka. C is a resolution introduced, I'm sorry. Next time, the minutes, and there are no applications.
The consent agenda is read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Dobler. Call the roll, please.
All right, Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Baldivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
No.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, with Councilmember Ortiz voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carrying, thank you. Move on to action item number four. Madam Clerk.
A is a public hearing to consider the establishment of Sherwood Professional Park Reinvestment Housing Incentive District and adoption of the plan, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for Sherwood Professional Park and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the RHID.
Am I correct that we had someone signed up for public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay. I'd ask for the public comment to proceed before we go further. If I can have Martha Boatright.
Hello. So, I had initially just been planning to come here for general public comment at the end, and I'm still signed up for that. But when I was looking at the agenda, I saw this item, and there was a particular line in the housing development plan that I wanted to talk about here. I'm not actually speaking out like for or against what you're doing specifically, it was just some of the language in here. I wanted to like make sure that the council was kind of aware of some facts. It says in the housing development plan that extensive housing research conducted in Topeka shows the urgent demand for multifamily housing options. The current housing crisis necessitates swift action with projections and so forth, and they give numbers. And this project is poised to significantly benefit our community, and the proposed units will aid in increasing the supply of multifamily units rented at market rate. So the crisis in Topeka isn't just the issue of housing, it's the issue of affordable housing, and I'm hoping that the city council understands that this is not affordable housing that's being built here. $1,900 a month. In order for that to be affordable housing, the household would have to be making a little over $68,000 a year, because rent is supposed to only be a third of your income. The average household in Topeka, according to the latest census data, makes a little under $56,000. So for the average household, affordable rent would be more like $1,500, and that's not talking about all the many low-income families, for whom that would be well above their price range, and it is certainly out of the price range for anybody on a fixed income. I worked with people with disabilities, one of these two-bedroom houses, they would be blowing through their entire check just covering rent. So second, so I just hope that everybody understands that this is not affordable housing. Secondly, and this is just, I've heard this argument get made, I first heard it get made by Mayor De La Isla at a talk years ago, and then when we had those apartments go in over by the cinema that were really, really expensive, a lot of people say that, well, we need to increase our housing and make these nice, high-end houses, because that's going to get people to move to Topeka instead of Lawrence. And I don't know when people say this, that they've actually been speaking to the people who work in Topeka and live in Lawrence, but I have several friends who are in that situation. And the housing situation here in Topeka is better than what it is in Lawrence. It's more affordable, there's a greater variety of house. Why they say they don't want to live here is because they say, you know, quote, "There's nothing to do in Topeka." And if you push harder, what they actually mean is that there is no Mass Street in Topeka. We could have a Mass Street. We have Kansas Avenue, we've got it nicely lit up right now, just like they do in the winter at Mass Street, but half the buildings are vacant. When my parents were host to a sister-city chaperone for Roscoe, they live in Lawrence, they always take them to Topeka too, and they thought that Topeka was smaller than Lawrence, because the downtown was just dead. When I took friends to an event at Evergreen Plaza, we went to go try to get a drink, we had to walk like three blocks to find a place where we could get in. And in the meantime, you're not walking past quirky shops and little restaurants, you're walking past empty windows with "for rent" signs. Nobody wants to go to a place that looks like that. Now, I can't attest directly to why this is, because I'm not privy to all of these things. All I know is that when I was working at Moberts five years ago, and it was still, this has been going on for ages and ages, because it was a problem then too, Al would always say that the problem was that whoever owns a lot of those building downtowns thinks he can charge, and I'm going to quote here, "want to make a rents." And that just drives everybody out. I know that the Brew Bank, Leaping Llamas, places that I've liked, they've disappeared, and nothing comes in and replaces them. And I don't know what you can do about that. It does sometimes seem like the law, whether it's for commercial or residential landowners, always seems to favor property owners over the thriving of our community, but if you can put any kind of tax or ordinance pressure on those buildings to be rented out, that would go a lot further towards making us more appealing to the rentians. I really love Topeka, I think it has really good bones. I defended a lot to my Laurentian friends with their right, our downtown stinks, and it would be really great if we had a Mass Street, I would like to have that. I know that's not super relevant for what you're saying, your housing may serve other purposes, but I just want to get the, kind of get that off my chest. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, I will ask that Rayanne Freeman, our Planning and Development Services Director, and City Attorney Stanley lead us to this item and answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body. So tonight, I am going to be presenting to you the proposal for Sherwood Professional Park RHID presented by Gen 3 Construction Development LLC. There we go, off to a good start. All right, so to provide you a little overview, Sherwood Professional Park is located at the southeast corner of Southwest 29th and Southwest Villa Drive. So, what you can see here, represented on the map of the right, it shows the M2 zoning, it's the yellow portion, the sliver there. So, the M2 zoning was adopted by the Planning Commission on May 15th, and then followed by governing body approval on June 13th. This parcel was previously zoned O and I too, had been zoned that way for quite some time, and really, nothing had developed here. So, when somebody came to seek a rezoning, it was something the Planning Commission entertained and was happy to, happy to help with. Okay, so some design details. I will say that, you know, I have the developer in the room who can answer questions if you'd like as well, but the design is preliminary. We've not gone through the site plan review process, but I imagine that if things result positively tonight, that that process will start pretty quickly. So this will show you a rendering of what's being proposed. So the proposal is for 10 for-rent duplexes, creating 20 units that are three-bedroom, two-bathroom, each with two car garages, so ample of parking. As stated before, these are market-rate apartments, market-rate multifamily rental pricing, it's targeted to be $1,900 a month to match the surrounding areas and rental prices for the market for new construction rentals. All right, so this slide is a lot of information, so I'll just kind of hit the highlights for you, but I like to put this up here, because it really talks about the amount of time that not only a developer, but staff and review committee goes through when reviewing each of these RHID proposals. These are not, these are not a fast, nothing about this is a fast program. A lot of thought and a lot of work goes into making sure that these are successful and, you know, the right, the right investment for, for the dollars. So, March 14th was when the original Step 1 application was submitted to create the district. After that, we moved forward with submitting it to Department of Commerce, who gave it their seal of approval. Then November 21st, we received the Step 2 proposal, which, that is the, that is the housing development plan application itself. So it provides far more detail about the investment, construction, sources and uses of funding that will be applied to the project. That allows us to dig a little bit deeper, to get our RHID review team together, and then do, provide our financial analysis. Then we set forth for the public hearing, and here we are tonight, holding that right now. All right, so speaking a little bit more about the RHID reimbursement specifically, so after the review of the financial analysis and some negotiations back and forth with the review committee, it was agreed that the following estimated RHID reimbursement amounts with an absolute cap of right over $1 million, which amounts to 16.7% of the total estimated project cost, was the, was going to be the correct amount to appropriately incentivize this project. So you can tell that the chart on the left talks about calling out all the total sources and uses, so this talks about all of the different types of funding, and then the chart that's to the right talks about the RHID applicable reimbursement. So underneath the statute, there are only certain things that are applicable for reimbursement by RHID, so that's what's been called out over here. All right. So, the developer was very forthcoming with us and talking about their timeline and their intention on how they plan to build out this development, with the expectation to construct the duplexes and two-building tranches in a sequence that would take place over 18 months, and this would start commencing after the site preparation concludes in June of 2025, if all things go according to schedule. So what we've done here is something that we've done before, the RHID review committee worked closely and decided that an earn-up structure to reach the RHID cap made the most sense, understanding that the developer's intention was to develop two duplexes or four homes at a time. That's how we've structured this. So you'll see in the development agreement, it calls out, after the first two, it opens up an allocation from $0 up to $200,000 and so forth, but not to exceed the final cap, and then to capture the 10 duplexes being built. All right, so last but not least is, a part of our policy for all of our RHID and incentive projects, we perform a BUT-4 test, and we do an analysis with our financial advisor. So, I'm going to break down this slide for you. So while running the, running the project rate of return, a 6.75 cap rate was identified as a target, based on the market and the type of the development. So as you can see on the project rate of return chart, that is shown on the left, without the RHID, the base scenario falls below the market rate of return. Similarly, the developers' leveraged or equity rate of return, that's represented by the chart on the right, also falls below, without the incentive being provided to help support the deal. So with, with these numbers, we're able to tell that we're not over-incentivizing this project, and we, we agree that, that cap rate of that $1 million is the appropriate amount to make this a market rate of return and make it a good project for the developer and for the community. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is in my district, and I think I know at least once, if not twice, I voted against it. But tonight, I'm going to vote for this, but I want to walk through why and sort of how this process has evolved a little bit. Originally, when we changed the zoning, we had no idea what the scope of the project was, and that raised some concerns with me, because they tried to cram some sort of apartment complex or quadriplexes back there, would have been an issue in terms of the traffic and the size of the road. But as staff worked with developers, they came up with a plan of the duplexes, that sort of solved that concern. Then the issue came up of whether or not there was going to be cutting that road through, whether we needed access. Turns out that's very expensive, which is probably the primary reason it's now not being cut through. But there were certainly citizens who live on that other side who were very concerned about what that would mean for, for their neighborhood and the traffic flow, so that's been sort of addressed as we've worked, that we don't need to cut that road through. And then, of course, the next question became, okay, well, if we're not cutting the road through, what does that do for police and fire and, and access of the road when people park in the street? But in working with everybody, looked at what kind of cars would be out there, the size of the road, the hours of the businesses across the street, to know when the traffic flow would be, and that all seems to work out. So, so I appreciate staff, as we've walked through this process, since you can see of March of last year, and I appreciate the developers being amenable, when I'm sure staff came to them with these concerns and said, hey, we need to address this, the guy in that district's, you know, rah rah rah. But, but I appreciate that they listened to me, and they listened to staff, and they listened to the citizens out there, and so I think that's why it's easier for me tonight to say, this is a good project, it's going to be a nice little addition in between the businesses that are there and the, and the home that's there, and so I will be voting for it tonight, despite my previous concerns and objections that are on the record. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. This does require a public hearing again, to allow anyone who wishes to speak to the item, so if anyone else on the council would like to make a comment, I'll entertain that, and then we'll give the public an opportunity to also speak again. Deputy Mayor.
Now, this may be on the higher end of the income scale, but it's a supply and demand issue, and right now, there is a high demand for housing in Topeka. Just looking at Zillow just now, there's only 240 listings right now in Topeka. So, the more demand there is, the more that rent's going to go up, the more the sale price is going to go up. So when we put more properties out there, the demand will go lower, which then in turn lower the housing prices, which makes it affordable for someone to go from being a renter to a homeowner. So, to me right now, our biggest thing is we need to get more properties out there for people to live in, so we can have that supply-demand kind of counterbalance and go back to the middle, a little more than being a high-demand aspect right now.
Councilman Banks.
This is, this is definitely a high-end project, and I just think there is a need in the different area than building more west-side condominiums, and this, to me, it seems like that type of project. I could be wrong. I don't live out there, and I wouldn't live out there. I just think that the money that we spend on, or invest in these types of projects doesn't help our greater need. The greater need is for moderate to low-income housing. I don't care how many people, houses are listed on Zillow, I don't know much about it, because my wife picks the house we live in, but I just think that the developer development should be considered more in the direction of moderate to low-income housing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Baldivia Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with Councilman Banks, I will not be supporting this. I don't have any good reasons to tell the young woman that came up, you know, why we're not showcasing what our plan is for, you know, low, low-income, you know, to moderate-income housing. We have all kinds of concerns on our plate, you know, with the budget, all of that, I get it. We know how desperately housing is needed, you know, safe and decent housing, whether it's rental or purchased, because of all the slum lords that we have, the good landlords, you know, they're probably having their clientele that's not leaving, but the bad ones, you know, are being stuck in places none of us would want to live in, Timberly being an example. I can't support this. I understand some of the rationale behind it, but people continue to say where the housing is needed, and, you know, this may be one of those points where they feel again that they're not being listened to. I would suggest, though, very strongly, City Manager, that there be some kind of presentation for the public that is easy to digest with the number of slides, that really tries to break down what, where we are so far with trying to bring affordable housing. I know with the $10 million of the ARPA funds, that those of us that were on the policy and finance committee back then, you know, were very thoughtful, along with communities' help, to giving dollars out that would, you know, that would bring up and provide some more affordable housing and some renovation of, you know, dilapidated housing. So I think that we have to highlight those examples again, where we have those real successes that average folks can relate to. I don't think we do a good enough job with highlighting those, so, you know, it might be two of us, you know, to get something out in the way of a presentation or put that out on social media, but it's just not enough at this point. So again, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, then Councilman Duncan.
No, I do agree, we need more low-income housing. I live in an LMI neighborhood, but it's one of those things of trying to get these developers to do that, so we might need to try to figure out ways to incentivize that. We'd have some greater organizations like SINT, who are going through high crest right now, and rebuilding homes in High Crest. We started a land bank, which is to help address the LMI, but to sit there and just deny someone because they want to make a higher-end product, just sits there and just says, well, you have to be below this threshold, or you can't build in Topeka, we're just going to, it's going to get more costly to live in Topeka, because the demand is going to keep on getting higher, or we're just going to start losing residents after a while. It's people's choices if they live in a $1,900 a month apartment, and I, that's the number that's put out there, just like the ones by Wheatfield and other places in the town. That's your choice if you choose to live in that high-end of rental, but just to sit there and say, well, it's high-end, so we can't approve it, is, is kind of short-sighted on the aspect of, we, we're trying to grow our city. We keep on saying we're trying, we're trying to grow our population, but if we're not going to approve more housing- more housing, we're not going to grow our population, we're going to decrease our population.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Three quick things, Mayor. First, just a reminder, the R H I D program is a state program. It's not costing the city any money to move this forward. I mean, we've got time into it and some of that, but this is a program we approve, but there's not a cost to us. Second of all, we're not building these houses. This is a private company that came to our city and they built other housing. And in fact, I think some of the things they're looking at meet some of those other criteria we're concerned about, and so I'm always inclined to take the good developers and welcome them to Topeka and hope that they continue to build. And then thirdly, I would move to your district, Councilman Banks. We're always welcoming district data, but I'll move to district four.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and, you'll still have an opportunity, Councilwoman Dobler. Open the public hearing procedure. What I need to do, and we've already had one person to speak, but I need to ask right now, is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter at this time? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter at this time? And for the third time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter at this time? Seeing that the public hearing is closed, and still we have an opportunity for council members to speak, Councilwoman Dowell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in. I will support this. What I'm reminded of is that our housing study did identify that we had needs at all income levels, and we're working on all of those levels, private sector at the low end as well as the high end, and then our participation where we can, where we can offer something. Right now, we've had applications for low-income housing tax credits, and you can only get so many at a time, so we're using those as they become available, as far as I know. I know we got a big one this year, 200-some units that are going to go in south of 10th Street, south of downtown, and that's huge. So we need to keep on all fronts, would be my point. Also, I know that we have a priority in our land use plan to do infill. And one of the things I like about this particular project is that there are housing all around and there's been this gap there, and it looks like with the developer and the staff, that a really good plan, and I appreciate Councilwoman Duncan's remarks as well, that a really good plan has been worked out, that will fill that in, create that additional density, generate more property taxes, be more appealing to people who come by that see we're fully developed and there's new stuff going on everywhere. So I really appreciate all the work and I will support.
Mayor, could I provide one quick comment? It's Rianna.
Who?
Sorry.
I looked up to TV.
You're good. I just wanted to provide a little context. Yes, so yes, piggybacking off of some of the comments made, the R H I D, while I think our priority is to try to focus on using it as a tool to capture new affordable housing as much as possible, we understand that our housing study does show a need of workforce, market rate, housing of all types, but particularly infill. I just want to say that since the developer is here, present, that this developer has used the R H I D program before, and the last project that they brought forward was workforce, single-family housing. It was a great project in North Topeka, so I think this is just a good example of somebody who's looking to do work all around Topeka and across the market with different, at different cost points. So just sharing that.
Thank you for clearing that out and adding that additional. Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think one of the important tasks of the city is to bring all of those different income-level housing and us being able to walk, chew gum, send a text, and walk the dog at the same time. So if we have, if we understand that we have to improve housing for all different levels, regardless of where the district is, I mean, it doesn't matter where they are, as long as more housing comes to our city, then great. If people move out of my district to move into yours because they like the housing, then great. Same thing to Duncan's. Like, that's fine, as long as we have a place for them to go. Thank you.
Okay.
One more comment.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks.
I don't have problems with development. My concern is, why do we always start on the west side of our city? Why can't that developer start southeast? I mean, when you say all over the city, I don't see it in my district, and I don't hear any conversation about when it's going to start in my district. I mean, I don't have any problems with development, but I mean, I have constituents that talk all the time, why are we not considered at the top of the ladder? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think some good points have been made. It's important for us to understand the points that were pointed out by Rianna and Councilwoman Duncan, as well as that it's not really necessarily the city picking these locations. It's the developer who sees that opportunity, and that developer should be encouraged as much as possible to support every effort. It was mentioned that they've also done work in North Topeka. And that has to create an environment for a developer to see opportunities in Topeka. It's not us picking where they will decide to build, but it is our job to encourage builders to do that. And by discouraging building at any level without some real vetting of the intent and the impact it'll make on our city, I think it's being short of our responsibility. So I will be speaking and am speaking in support of this because I think it's yet another opportunity to show that people in Topeka will fill in wherever you build. So if you decide now to build in North Topeka or East Topeka, they'll fill it in, but it has to be based on the population and the market, and the developers know that. Topeka themselves, us as City Council, we're not housing developers, that's not our job. That's why we have people like Rianna and others who show us where those opportunities are in our community. So I understand the concerns that, why are we not building in East Topeka? It's not we, it's the private individual builders who are helping build the capacity of this city. So I will be speaking in favor of this. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also say that we don't know how to run hotels either, that's not our job, but I do want to say that...
That's unnecessary, Councilwoman.
I think, I think, I think that it has nothing to do with whether, in my, with my comments, whether it was one side of Topeka or another side of Topeka, but now that we bring that up, you know, it's, we understand, those of us that serve LMI districts, understand that we continually have to be cognizant of how redlining, you know, has, and still impacts, and was detailed all over the housing study, impacts development in our, in our communities. And so, I mean, I think that that's definitely a sensitivity I carry. I understand what's going on in my district. I know what's being built and what's not being built, but I think that this really, to me, is about the affordable aspect part. And I understand that, you know, there are other affordable and higher-end developments, you know, going up. So, you know, the decision to not put in the vote is, number one, it continues to concern me how we use the R H I D and, you know, when we were talking about Klossman, that if all that ends up going through, then, you know, there may, we don't know yet, there may be some kind of, you know, really gross, in my opinion, abuse of it, you know, because of him owing all of those back taxes and, you know, all of that. So, you know, there's, there could be multiple reasons why any one of us as council people may decide for not voting for a certain item. And while I am thankful for this developer for, you know, doing stuff in my district, I'm certainly not going to sit here and go, you know, well, I'm going to end up voting for it because everybody else votes for it. And so, you know, I'm doing it because it doesn't feel like there's enough affordable housing and we haven't shown that enough to the public, and, you know, Councilwoman Hiller went on with everything that's being done, and we need to bring that forth and we need to tell the public that, because they don't have all the ins that we do, we're knowing where all of this is going. But again, I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
We do have some projects on the east side, and that's my district. 37th and Kansas, there's that large property that's been talked about a couple different times in the last year, and people in that area have a large issue with that. It'd be displacing the homeless, it'd be raising the property values, which then raises the tax rate, all these things. And so, it's one of those things of, we got to take it where we can take it sometimes, and I would love for more to come into my district. I would love for that property, that property was, in my mind, a great tiny home community for Topeka, for LMI's, and also trying to transition homeless from homeless to renters or buyers. So it's, there's always going to be, it's always a double-edged sword on this topic. And there's always going to be one side that's for it and one side that's against it, depending on where it goes. And I just hope that we can work towards possibly incentivizing our developers to look at open properties, vacant properties, things like that, to look at as, where as they can give back to the community on that LMI side of things, but also take care of our across-the-board price ranges. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dobler.
Call the question.
Thank you. There's been asked to call the question by Councilman Dobler. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Hofer. Take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, question's been called, and now we're at a point where I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Duncan. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes with councilmembers, Valdivia Akala and Banks voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for your votes. Move on to Agenda Item 4B. If the clerk would read it, please.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Robert Perez regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance for Hotel Topeka.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, I would ask that Branson Cockley, our Assistant City Manager, lead us through this item.
Good evening, governing body. This is the same item that we discussed during the TDC board meeting. This is a request for operational funding for Hotel Topeka. Currently, we have approximately $150,000 in the operating fund. Based on the projections over the course of the next month, payments will be needed for taxes, payroll, insurance, as well as guest supplies, cleaning supplies, and utilities. Consequently, our management company has asked for operation funding in the amount of $71,449. I would respectfully ask that you approve this resolution.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cockley?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. If you will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
So we have six yes, I'm sorry, seven, no, six yes with councilmembers Valdivia Akala, Ortiz, and Banks voting no. Seven, sorry.
Seven. Not three, no.
Right. One, two, three, sorry.
Repeat, seven yeses, three noes.
Correct, it carries.
Motion carries. Thank you for your votes. Move on now to Action Item 4C.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the procedure for the selection of councilmembers to serve as voting members of the JETO Economic Development Organization and amending Resolution Number 8823.
Okay, on this item 4C, I have one gentleman signed up for this item, Mr. Henry McCleod.
I like the gentleman part, thank you, Your Honor. Nice to see you. Sir?
There's a slip of the tongue.
It's okay. The night is young. We could ask you why you never countered offered my hotel offer of $7.6 million. But that aside, we're talking about JETO? JETO has outlived its usefulness in this community. It has turned into an NGO that is basically farming off money to people that don't deserve it. You've turned into a self-serving organization that is beginning to look rotten. I'm telling you, let me use an analogy. On your last deal that you approved with the AT&amp;T building, you wouldn't give Elon Musk a 10-year lease for a building that he owned and pay for it with taxpayer money. And you wouldn't give him $6.5 million to renovate for the lease. And GoToPika, the non-government organization, shouldn't be determining where our tax dollars go. We can't afford GoToPika. We can't afford to own hotels. We can't afford to pay our bills. There wouldn't be a $20 million shortfall. So when we start considering JETO and how it's outlived its usefulness, I guess I'm just going to have to write a book, because you can't start over every time you start explaining JETO. When I went door-to-door over in Oakland, you start talking to JETO, people don't know what JETO is. They don't get it. If JETO was any good, you would have solved Lawrence Bay. You've been for a decade hanging out with the county commissioners, city council, county commissioners, you should have solved Lawrence Bay a decade ago. You're not acting responsible as a group. There's changes going on in the universe. Right now, nobody's letting it be. It's all about help. Remember, help, I need somebody? Help, I need anybody? And the taxpayers need help. You're taxing people out of their homes. You guys bought some land for me about 18 years ago, 19 years ago, whatever. There was a little lawyer around here always used to say that was to shut you up. It didn't work. But think about it, that property's been off the tax rolls for 19 years. Government should get out of, you can't create a market. Not only are you not housing developers, you're not commercial developers. And with R H I D, with TIF, the governor passed R H I D because we have a shortage of housing. Don't blame the developer that wants to develop wherever he wants, where the market decides. You know, I've talked to this guy, woo, excuse me, I've talked to this guy about develop, I'd hire him to do some projects I have in Christina's neighborhood, which she was against having low-income people in. You know, you got to have really long memories. It's kind of hard for you guys to see me being the adult in the road, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we've had the opportunity for a public comment. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, members of the governing body. I'll ask Amanda Stanley, your City Attorney, to lead us through this item.
Okay, thank you. This was requested on behalf of some of you to be drafted. As you remember, back in 2016, we had the fun election changes where we went from spring to fall elections. Then we spent a couple years with the legislature, having our swearing-in date as the second Monday in January. Then a lobbyist got that changed back in the day, and we moved our meeting around to being sworn in the first meeting in January. When we did that, we did not... When we did that, we did not update the resolution to correspondingly update when we vote on JEDO so that it takes place the same week that we elect the deputy mayor. So, this will correct that and put us back to how people used to remember it, where you elect your deputy mayor, and then you pick your JEDO people on the same day. Happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for City Attorney? Okay, C, nine. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilwoman Hiller. You'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item 4D. Madam Clerk.
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 141037 Phase 3 for traffic signal replacement at 21st Street and Bell Avenue.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groan, our Public Works Director, will lead us through this item.
Steve?
Good evening, governing board. This is part of our 2024 Traffic Signal Replacement Program. This traffic signal at 21st and Bell, it's the signal just east of I-470 by West High School. It was built in 1984, and we're looking for your approval to go ahead with the scheduled replacement of the system.
Anybody from the committee wish to speak on the item? Motion to approve? Pardon? Motion to approve?
Yes.
By Councilwoman Ortiz. Seconded by Councilman Dobler. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
And Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to Action Item 4E. Madam Clerk.
E is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 701040281250 Phase 17, 291143 Phase 4, 502730, and 502730 Phase 1 for Southwest Varillon Road rehabilitation from 23rd Street to 28th Street.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groan, our Public Works Director, will lead us through this discussion.
Once again, good evening. This will be a two-year project with your approval. This year will be predominantly utility work. There'll be extensive storm sewer replacements, sanitary sewer lining and replacements. The project will also include widening the road at 25th Street to add turn lanes, and then next year, we'll wrap it up with the pavement rehabilitation and get this project wrapped up.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, seconded by Councilman Dobler. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We have 10 yes.
Okay. Move to Action Item 4F. Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I'd like to recognize the City Manager at this time for the next two items.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting to withdraw Items 4F and 4G from the agenda and add them both to the agenda for March 4th. The resolution language, amending the CIP for Item 4F, needs to be revised, and Item 4G is a companion resolution for the project.
Okay. City Attorney, I don't think we have, do we have to vote on that? We're just, it's just taken off the agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
No objections. Yep.
We'll move on to Item 4H then. Madam Clerk.
H is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 2025 to 27 CIB to revise the funding allocations for project number 861411 for T-PAC Building Apartments.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Jason Tryon, our Deputy Public Works Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. What you have before you is a CIP amendment, so funds were previously approved to make some capital improvements to the T-PAC structure. What this resolution would do would be to move some of those funds up from '26 and ' '27 into 2025. The advantage of doing that is that we currently have a lot of those areas demolished. It would be most prudent to perform those improvements now while we can put back finishes and fixtures that are more appropriate with our long-term needs without having to demolish the structure again later to make similar improvement. So, that's what's before you today. The upgrades would include upgrades to the basement hills room, Fleming Room, and Petro Room, also some upgrades into the first-floor spaces. We have members of the T-PAC Board and Executive Director here that can cover what the improvements will be to the facility and how those better fit into their long-term plans for the facility. If you have any questions on that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about constructability if you have those.
Any questions for Councilman Dobler?
Just speaking on behalf of the committee, this, this project makes a lot of sense. As Jason said, it's already under construction. It just makes a lot of sense to do this portion of it. It's gonna save us dollars later, and appreciate them looking out for this, and I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilman Banks. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Motion carries. We'll move to Action Item 4I. And on this particular item, we have Mr. McPhee signed up to speak to this item.
Okay.
Mr. McPhee, you take your comments first, please.
I is approval of contract amendment for Southwest Huntune Street, street design project from Gage Boulevard to Harrison Street.
Okay, thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, Your Honor. We don't have the money for this. Plus, it's not even necessary. I took Huntune home from work, and it works. What are we thinking? Mr. Braxton was up not too long ago, and he told us that we had a shortfall of $16.5 million from the money that was on the original sales tax. The one that I'm trying to save $5 million from, from cutting off the gifts and grants, the, it's like, you might've heard of USAID, it's the exact same thing, wrapped up in the name GoToPika. But I'm telling you, you guys should interview some of the firemen in this neighborhood or in the community. I've just heard some people one time in a restaurant complaining about 12th Street, or the next street over, is that 12th? The one-way westbound. And they were talking about how unsafe it is. I love that street now because nobody likes it. You can get all the way from Topeka to Huntune lickety-split. Don't ever get caught on the sides because you can't take a left or right onto that street, but man, I love it now. It's a thoroughfare, because everybody avoids it. Thank you. But it's not gonna be good today until we get our, until we get our arms around our economic freedom around this joint. I think that we shouldn't be investing money into money we don't have. Why don't we live as humans here and run our government like we do our house? If we don't have the money, at least in my place, now, I have found out from being an alcoholic, by not drinking for a decade, all of a sudden, I got money. But there isn't anything more similar to being a drug addict and an alcoholic than being a government spender. It's like getting your fix for the next thing. I see the similarities in it the longer I stay sober. It's a shame. If you want to get, if you want to get people to move to Topeka, quit trying to decide who gets the deals, quit trying to make a false market. All we have to do is make it safe and have nice streets. Let's have clean water that we don't have to boil. But we don't have to put money into this deal today. We can move on. Add it to the list. Let's pay for everything that's on the sales tax. You gotta help us out, Your Honor. It's your job to be the leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Copley, our Assistant City Manager, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, governing body. We're here in front of you today to simply ask for your approval of the design contract so that we can get under design for the Huntune project. Last week, we did a presentation. We've done one earlier in the fall. We did a lot of public engagement, and basically, based on the public engagement, based on traffic safety issues, based on pavement condition, based on utilities, our recommendation is that we go in and do a complete reconstruction of that project, that we replace the water line, because there are 30% of the, of the blocks in that project do not have adequate water lines. We believe, based on traffic safety, that taking it down to one lane as opposed to the existing two lanes will make a significant improvement on traffic safety, both in terms of reducing conflict points as well as reducing speed limits. And then finally, the capacity analysis that we did is that one lane is sufficient to be able to carry the traffic on the Huntune Street. I respectfully ask for your approval of the design contract, and myself and the project manager from the consultant are here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Councilman Dobler, I mean Duncan?
So, Mayor, as I've stated several times, including last week, I still don't like the idea of 10-foot sidewalks. I think it takes too much, too many feet away from a lot of the front-facing properties. I think because we're gonna have sidewalks on both sides, because we have a bike lane, we could go down to five or six-foot sidewalks. This is a primary reason, but I also think that shaving four or five feet of sidewalk concrete off saves a few dollars on the project and still doesn't really harm anything we're trying to accomplish. So, I would like to amend into this, I would move that, to include that no sidewalk is to exceed six feet in width in the design. That way, they don't go and design something that when we come back here, I'm gonna try to convince everybody to make them go redesign. Just put it out there now. So, that would be my motion, is to include, to amend it to include that sidewalk provision.
Okay. You have a motion? A second from Councilwoman Hofer. Let's have some discussion before we vote. Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, and then we'll have discussion. So, if you call the roll.
May I, may I please, just as a point of consideration, I know that there has been a lot of discussion and comment on the width of shared-use paths. I just want to make sure that the governing body is fully cognizant of both the fact that in 2009, the governing body approved a complete streets resolution, that to the extent possible, that funding is possible, that complete streets items should be incorporated into projects. The reason why we have in our concept plan, and again, nothing is designed in our concept plan, the reason why we have included a five-foot sidewalk on one side to do 10-foot wide shared use on the other side, is because the MTPO in 2019 adopted the Complete Streets Design Guidelines. The city is a member of the MTPO. So, those design guidelines say that for shared-use paths, that they should be 10 feet. Now, if you're gonna be carrying two-way traffic, they should be greater than 10 feet, preferably 11 feet or greater. If they're, if, because you're constrained by right-of-way or other things, you can take a shared-use path down to eight feet. The reason why we have included those is because in a policy document approved by the MTPO, there are design guidelines, and we have followed those design guidelines. Now, this governing body has the absolute ability as the ultimate policymaker to say, we do not want you to follow that, and we will, we absolutely will follow instructions. But I wanted you to understand where we were coming from, that it was not just an arbitrary thing, that we were going to put a 10-foot wide on one side and five foot on the other, that we are trying to do the best that we can to follow design guidelines that have been approved by the MTPO.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor.
Just curious, and I, and maybe just, out of policy, has been written and stuff like that, and where things want to go, then why have a shared use in a bicycle? I just, I don't, I, because to me, if there's a shared use, most people are probably gonna be using that rather than the bicycle path, because they're gonna want to see off the road and out of the harm, less harms way by being on the sidewalk rather than a bicycle path.
Councilmember, that is, that is an excellent question. And basically, the, the reason why is that you have cyclists of different abilities. And so, if you have a cyclist that is a beginner cyclist, or think of someone with a child with a bicycle on training wheels, they need to have protection from the traveling, the automobiles. And so, a shared-use path is a wonderful opportunity for those cyclists that need that protection, they need that extra sense of security. On the other end of the spectrum, you have the cyclists, I call them the spandex people, that can ride their bicycle 20 miles an hour, that are absolutely fearless. Those people do not want to be on a shared-use path, they do not want to be on a sidewalk. They want to be in the street because they want to be visible to the cyclists. If they were on a shared-use path or a sidewalk, they're at the end of a curb return, and they are relying on a driver to spot them as they're making a turn, and drivers oftentimes are not looking for someone riding a bicycle 20 miles an hour. And so, ASHTO is part of their, design criteria has said, a shared-use path does not prohibit having a bike lane, nor does a bike lane prohibit having a shared-use path, because you have to take into consideration cyclists of all different, different skill levels, from those of the expert down to, down to the neophyte. Now, a single five-foot wide sidewalk is great for a person walking their dog. If you have a family out with bicycles and you're trying to go in two directions with people walking, jogging, and someone riding a bike, five-foot wide sidewalk is a little bit tight. And I'm just basically telling you what the literature says relative to complete streets in terms of making sure that we design or compatible for all users, whether they're pedestrians or cyclists, and taking into consideration the levels of the cyclists.
Now, have we ever surveyed to see how many of the, as you call the spandex group? Because here in town, all I ever see them on is on the trails, and actually, on the out, on the edge of town, on the county roads. I really rarely ever, I don't think I've ever seen anyone on a bicycle path that we have designated as a bicycle path here in town. So, it's just one of those things of, are we pushing in something that isn't really necessary at this time, and isn't gonna be used at this time, for something that may happen in the future by having these? We may get some of those people, but I see them, like I said, more on the county roads where there, it's a straight shot, where they have big gaps between intersections, or on the trail system over by my house. I see them flying through there, and, you know, thinking that we were able to put crosswalk lights there for them to go, go through there, but I don't really see them on our city roads.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when we had our conversation last week, it struck me that we could probably use an overall training refresher, refresher for those of us who know it, but we've got a number of people on the council that just aren't familiar with those guidelines and where they came from, and I think that would really help. Braxton, you've done a good job at giving some pieces. I've been here through all that development, and what I'll tell you is, we're improving[1767.62] so much. One of the things that gets overlooked, in Huntoun in particular, if we go to one lane, we've got room for a bike lane, and those through cyclists belong there. It's dangerous to be on the sidewalk, because you've got driveways and alleys and all these places where there could be an intersect with somebody who's really moving. On the other hand, if you've got little kids learning to ride, they got their training wheels on, and they're wobbling a little bit, they belong on the sidewalk, not in the street. And those are the choices that, that we see people typically making. The issue for me, in my experience, on the sidewalks is pedestrians, it's mobility folks. I've been involved when the sidewalks went in, for instance, on Washburn Lane Parkway in downtown, like near McDonald's, issues of people in wheelchairs. What happens if, you know, the big electric wheelchairs are 40 inches wide now, they take up a lot of space. And what happens is if you're side by side, or you're going the other way, somebody's going to go off that sidewalk in order to, to manage that passage. People in wheelchairs tip over if the sidewalk's uneven, or they end up off that walk. People in bicycles end up on soft dirt, on an angle, and crashing. I'm using just a couple of examples of why they've come up with the 10 feet. I get the reticence about it. What we have found, and if you go down 12th Street, for instance, what we've found is that when we do it, people do use it, particularly in the area that we're talking about, we've got a lot of runners and joggers, families with the stroller and the kids and the dog. It matters. I live on Lane Street, people do use those bike lanes all the time. It depends on their comfort level, you see them on the sidewalk or on, on the street, just depending on who they are. There will be more as we do a better job of creating those, the connected bikeways all the way along. When they, when they started that plan, they said, well, let's put a framework in, people aren't comfortable separating those bike lanes, so for right now, let's make a network over the city, and you can think of it, because you've seen it, where we'll just put charros on the streets and change the signs to blue and say it's a bikeway. So we did a whole lot of that. What they said is that naturally, people are ready for that next level, once you get that grid and that activity in place. Also correspondingly, we went from having just a concept resolution about complete streets in 2009 to passing the full design guidelines in 2019. So Topeka's been kind of coming along with the rest of the country, and the, and the research and work on those standards in general, and just literally how much room it takes for somebody to be safe, as well as how other cities have used it. So I also, last week, realized that, kind of to divine dismay, when the discussion went on, that a slide, a slide that was used in the slide deck when we first heard the results of the hearings and the process on this proposal, was not brought forward last week, or even with the handout today. And that was the slide that talked about the, the reaction of folks from the area that voted, voted what their preference was after they had attended the public hearings and learned about what the options were. Those three options were to, to leave it as a street maintenance only with no street elements, to do a full-designed two-lane road with complete street elements, and to do full design with a single-lane road and complete streets elements. And 77 percent of those returning the surveys live and electronically voted for the design that you see. I think that's really powerful. 20 percent responded full design with two-lane, and only 3 percent for street maintenance only. That's pretty powerful from the people that live in, particularly District 1 and 6, who have been involved in this process. So I will, I will not vote for the change, for the amendment, but I really do encourage people to think through the support for the project overall. Thank you.
Councilman Miller, and then Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. As I appreciate Councilman Duncan's thought about cost-saving, the adoption of complete streets since 2001, 2000, we have probably 1,500 jurisdictions in the United States that have adopted complete streets, us being one of them. And those streets, and the reason, I imagine the reason they call it, and on the webpage talks about complete streets, is because incomplete streets are what Huntoun is right now, not considering the needs of everyone who travels the roads, not just drivers of vehicles. So those shared paths are necessary to have the complete street. I'm okay with an eight-inch, as Mr. Copley said that that's something that would be acceptable. But going down to six, just because of what we may think somebody may feel, loses the aim of what we're doing the street for. And that's to make it a safe way for all people to travel through that part of town. Thank you very much.
Councilman Duncan?
I'll just end with this, Mayor. I've read through complete streets. It doesn't say, do this no matter what, everything else be damned. It certainly talks about considerations for the environment that you're putting it in, the surroundings, how it fits the space, and the project itself. There are those caveats built into complete streets. There is a stretch of these houses from Gage to Medford, wherever it is, that have never had a sidewalk. So when those houses were built, those yards were designed, they were done without the idea of there being a sidewalk. If we build a 10-foot sidewalk, and then we're talking about a couple feet for an easement, we're talking about 13-ish feet that will now be taken from these front yards. And we got to take something, I get that. And I just think if we can save four or five feet of these folks who've had these yards and who've expected some yard, and some of those are going to be pretty cut in half, I mean, if you're going on that street. And so I just think a consideration for those has sort of been left out of this, and that's part of the reason that I put this forward. But we'll see where it goes, and I just wanted to at least, at least make the effort. Thank you, Mayor.
And just a final comment. I understand your concern about both costs and property owners losing some property that maybe in the discussions didn't realize what their front yard would look like, as you include the easement and the sidewalks. But I think, as best I can determine, that a lot of engagement was had with those who are going to be affected by this project if it passes. And I think that citizens have said, if that's what it takes to improve our condition in our neighborhood, then we're okay with that. And that is manifest by, what was it, 77 percent return? I could see if it was a little bit less. I want to make sure that if this passes, we again revisit those neighborhoods and let them know that this was a choice they had, and that whether the Governing Body approves it or not, we considered their choice. For me, it's all about safety, about how close you are to the road, walking, cycling, pushing a child in a carriage, whatever, it's how close you're to the road. If you can be far enough to feel that you're safer, that's where I come in. So I understand all the arguments, and they're not with some merit. But I wouldn't support the change as proposed by Councilman Duncan. If they're, Councilman?
How many people took the survey? I think just short of 100. And they all live on the street? We didn't track down all their addresses or ask for that information. They're just people that gave those opinions through our online survey or potentially as a person. Okay, so we don't even know if that 77 percent was all any of the people who live on the street?
Well, that's pretty much who came to the hearings.
Well, okay. If you're going to use the survey, it'd be nice to know that the people actually live there who took the survey.
May I, as a, just a point of clarification, the right-of-way along Huntoun is 60 feet. The profile, the typical section that we have offered, which includes sidewalk, bike lane, shared use path, single travel lane, fits within the 60 feet. So we are, we, there might be some exceptions in terms of where we would need to obtain right-of-way, but for the most part, there's 60 feet of right-of-way in there, and what we propose on the typical section will fit within 60 feet of right-of-way. Now, there's some, there have been some survey issues along there that we're going to have to work through. While we've done the first level, the first tranche of public engagement, as we get going into design, utility relocation, clarifying design, there will be many more opportunities. I want to say there's another almost 10 different public engagement sessions that are contemplated as part of this design contract, to engage the residents in the discussions in terms of sidewalk, bike path, trees, all of those things that are going to come up as issues during the, the design, the actual design of the, of the project.
Deputy Mayor, then Councilman Dobler, did you?
Just curious, is there anyone's on their property, like, just knowing that some of those houses, someone's feeling, they're right on, on the road, would anyone's, in essence driveway become unusable because of the sidewalks? And then if they were to park in there, their vehicle would be hanging out over that?
We have not done survey, we have not done design survey. The original project was only for high-level, high-level concepts and cost estimates as well as public engagement.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Braxton already answered this, but I'll say it again, just, just for clarity, as the design commences and you get detailed drawings, detailed plan views, there will be interaction with the property owners and the public in general. So they'll be able to see what that sidewalk does in front of their house, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you. I have a question. Do we know approximately how many homes will be impacted with this large swath being taken from their front yards that Councilman Duncan is talking about?
We don't really know at this time. Like Braxton has stated, this was something we've just put forward, an idea for us to look at, but we haven't gone through property by property, or even made a decision on where these paths would be sized. This is just a concept that we put forth, and if we have the approval from the council, then we can move forward and answer a lot of these questions that we've been posed to tonight.
Okay, and thank you for that. And I would just say, definitely, it's going to be good that there's going to be additional meetings that are going to be had, and definitely would suggest these folks that are going to have such, possibly have such large swaths of yard, of their yard taken, that they start organizing and let their voices be heard. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Yeah, one more quick question, probably for Jeff. This typical section's going to be graded pretty much the same way, whether there's a sidewalk there or not, right? Whether the sidewalk's six feet wide or 10 feet wide, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So as you get into the process, if it becomes clear that the 10-foot shared use path is not feasible, and it might make more sense to make it eight feet, or, or even six feet if that's necessary, it's not going to require a lot of rework to make that happen, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment by Councilman Duncan? Seeing none, we'll vote on that.
Can it be restated?
If the clerk would restate, please.
The motion is to amend the design concept so that no concept, or no sidewalks are larger than 10 foot in width.
Six. Six.
Six feet. Sorry about me today, even tonight, I'm just not here. Okay, six feet. Whatever you'd like it to be, I don't care.
No, no wider than six feet, correct? If you call the roll, please.
All right, if I can do this right. Councilmembers Miller?
No.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
No.
Councilmembers Hiller?
No.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails. We have five yes and five no. So the noes are Hiller, yes, Hiller, Valdivia Akala, Miller, Dobler, and Mayor Padilla. So the motion fails.
So we're back to the original proposal that we have before us. City Manager, did you want to add anything further, or any discussion on the original?
No, sir, I appreciate it.
We'll call the, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Dobler? We'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
No.
Hofer?
No.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have six yes, with Councilmembers Ortiz, Banks, Duncan, and Hofer voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for your votes. I think it's clear, though, gentlemen, as the project proceeds, contact with the homeowners and that feedback that you get, if it's shared with the Governing Body, I think it would be important for us to be able to, I won't say monitor, get a feel for how it's affecting the neighborhood, and give the opportunity for you to see if there's flexibility in making adjustments so that the project can move forward, but it moves forward in a positive way with everyone, everyone's consideration. I appreciate that. Thank you both very much. Okay, we'll move now to public comments. Glad to see the first one up, because she had to lead last time, is Ms. Lassiter.
All right. Glad to be back again tonight, and I thought, Mayor, that you might give me eight minutes instead of four minutes. I was neglected.
We'll see how much you need to be.
I don't think I need, I don't think I need eight minutes tonight. But I tell you what I am concerned about, is that I know that eyes in the nation is on Topeka, Kansas. And I'm real concerned because of, with the Brown v. Board, with the Miniger Foundation, with the Stones Folly, which maybe some people understand, don't understand, that was a spiritual illumination or revelation to Topeka, so some people don't understand that, but we're somebody that's important. And the scripture that keeps coming to me, or the passage that's coming to me, whatever you want to term it, is if my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves, seek my face and pray. You have been the call. You have been the chosen. And it's important for you to understand that you're here to gain the trust of this community and the entire community. So the financial crisis piece, I do not agree with a half cent. I believe that the police are already protected, and that the money should go to the social services, the housing, the mental illness and so forth. I'm concerned because just recently, a video was released, and a magistrate judge released that video. And there was a mother there, Ms. Duncan, she had gone and requested the video from our city attorney's office, but she'd been requesting it for two years, just to get a resolve about the incident that happened with the father of her daughter, and it was blocked by the city attorney's office. So that forced her to file a civil suit. She did not want to. Tax dollars. And my concern here is too many tax dollars are going into unnecessary lawsuits. Our city attorney ordered, even when they finished that, after the judge ordered it, fought a protective order for it to remain to block the public release of the video. Now here we are again. So this mother is in a position where her family wants truth. The truth is, to them, their loved one was murdered, he was massacred 34 times. We won't even go into that piece. Why did the city attorney file sanctions against the plaintiff or the mother, who's only looking for truth, and another attorney, which the caveat is, the other persons participating in the video being released were Caucasians? The persons who were cited with sanctions were African-American female. It's concerning because in our city, the recent '23-'24 lawsuits that have been filed were about discrimination. '23-'24, we spent approximately $1 million, taxpayers' monies, on lawsuits that we possibly could have set down. Can I have another minute?
You still have a minute, ma'am.
That's, okay, thank you so much. That all they wanted was the truth revealed. Now, I'll tell you now, the police are protected. They're protected, right or wrong. I love the true blues. We need our police officers. We need our police officers, but we need them walking right and doing things correctly. Now, more lawsuits are now being filed. You're going to hear more about the fact that the city attorney's office is over the top with taxpayers' money. Now, what am I saying tonight? I was an administrator. I had a superintendent tell me that, he said, Sandy, I know you like the promotion, but you're here to clean it up. And I was like, oh my, that's not a good, that's not a good sound. So the first thing I would like to see us do is rescind the sanctions against these people unnecessarily because all they wanted was the truth. And secondly, city attorney.
Ma'am, how much time would you like?
That's it.
Couple more minutes?
I just need one more minute, and I want to say, I don't know if the sanctions, I'm sorry.
Just a moment. I have to do the procedure, please.
Sure.
But we'll allow you another two minutes unless there's an objection in the body. Go ahead, please proceed.
In light of our city, as I'm hearing, you talk about finances. I don't have any vendetta, you know, vindication against anyone. I just like us to do our job and do it right. And the superintendent said to me, Sandy, you're here to clean it up. You are here to clean it up. This is not the only lawsuit. More are coming, and the people are concerned because the sanctions need to be withdrawn. They were unnecessary. It's costing more taxpayers' dollars. And secondarily, the city attorney, I don't know if it was detrimental, if it's vindictive, I don't know, but our entire community needs to be protected. And if I was a mom and had a loved one and lost a loved one like that, I would want the truth as well. And you might have received my link that I sent to you today. It came from out of state, where people are calling in from other states and saying there was a lie told, the police lied, this man did not attack them with a knife, and he was only protecting and defending himself. God bless you. Clean it up. I love you, love to all and malice to none, but let's get it right.
Thank you. Second person we have, Martha Boatright.
Hello. So I'm calling, coming here because after I spoke, yes, last week about the half cent thing, there were, I think some people kind of misunderstood what I was saying there because some people were saying that, that I didn't understand that like the money could be going towards the police versus going towards things. I do understand what happened. You guys voted for a pay raise for police and for firefighters, and more for police than for firefighters. And that has put us massively increased our budget and so that we are going to have to either increase sales tax or do cuts, probably some combination of both. What I meant, just to clarify what I meant, is that when inevitably you start looking at places to save money, I would like you to not look at cutting social services, things like building affordable housing, things like having a mental health service, things like finally having a decent homeless shelter in this place, all the funding that we need to have to prevent crime. I would say, let's start looking at cuts in the police department. I know people don't like saying that, but we have a huge police budget. It is 42% of our budget. We haven't, have we had an audit of them, is what I'm saying. They are, they are part of government just like everything else. They can be looked at under fine-toothed comb as well. Do we have administrative positions? Don't need to be there. I know that, yes, last week, the head of the Fraternal Order of Police talked about how, you know, this increase of crime is happening while we're having fewer positions filled, and argued that therefore, obviously, you know, we need more police officers and therefore that would reduce crime, to which I say citation needed. There is no evidence that having more police officers leads to lower crime. Study after study has shown that, and that seems counterintuitive until you realize that police don't prevent crime, they respond to it. You can have as many police out there as you want on the street, but if the crime is happening inside people's homes, if the crime is happening because you have children who aren't protected by DCF and wind up homeless and living out in camps, and those people are in camps because they don't have a low barrier homeless shelter to go to, that's where you have crime. Increasing, if we go fill up to a 300 police positions, all they're going to be doing is chasing after the crime that's happening. It's not going to actually be reducing crime, especially if we start cutting the necessary social services that we have that actually do prevent crime and decrease crime. We're going to just be increasing what they have to do. It's a never-ending spiral. So I know it's not popular to say that because people want you to back the blue no matter what. I'm not saying that we completely get rid of the Topeka Police Department. I'm not saying that. I'm saying we look at where we are spending our money and where it is being best spent so that we are actually preventing crime and decreasing crime in Topeka. And honestly, you can start by firing those guys who shot him 34 times because that was appalling. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Victor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lot to talk about. I covered a lot of ground. I want to thank one of your city council people, Spencer Duncan. He was up on my show the other day, got grade rating. Made me look good. Everybody liked him. I apologize for calling him Ryan. He has a brother named Ryan, but I apologize. Had to tell Tuck. But one thing that was really important that came out in that meeting, and Spencer Duncan promised he'd look into it, and that's that Citizens Committee. Now, the Citizens Committee is state law, and it's been around for five years and yet to be implemented. And you're going to hear more about the Citizens Committee because really it's the answer to our future. I'll get you the statute. I'll, I'll find it. We're going to do a full report. The media company is going to do a full report on the Citizens Committee. We've, we've introduced it a couple of times down at the county commission. I think that might have been the time where Commissioner Cook gave me that children's book and told me that, you know, I ought to learn more about politics. That's what my representative did to me in the county, gave me a children's book. You know, I've risked a lot of capital in this town, personal. It's like a crap table here. You never know when you're going to roll craps. But the Citizens Committee is the answer to making the Greater Topeka Partnership evaporate, which is basically a political action committee for elected officials in the community. And it really will take the place of the chamber because it's law. The Citizens Committee is made up of a bunch of elected officials, school board people, water districts, and citizens. Do you know the last time the MTPO even met in person was almost three and a half years ago? And I was on the MPO when it got disbanded by Vic Miller. Because we wouldn't approve the county budget because they weren't following the law. And it wasn't just Henry's idea. I talked to metropolitan planning commissioners. They said, well, you know something? We don't really like this guy, but he's right. And you know something? We ought to put our metropolitan planning commissioner back together. The 77% thing, that's ridiculous. Why don't we do a benefit district? How about those people that voted for this project that you can't afford? Let them pay for it. Let the guy that wants to do the AT&amp;T building pay for it. We got to get people to put their money where their mouth is. I've had to. You know what? I like you guys. I really do. I don't want to hate Topeka. And I'm not going to let the government make me hate Topeka because it's all of ours. You know, I love Sandy Lassiter. I was on her site council over at Quentin Heights. That's the day I met Mr. Banks. He's out there telling those kids to not use drugs. You remember that? I did a cartwheel. Well, anyway, thank you for the opportunity. I've got to talk a couple of times, got it off my chest. I don't have to have a psychiatrist because of this. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on now to announcements. Madam Thork?
Okay. Tomorrow, the February 12th Jetto Board meeting has been canceled due to anticipated inclement weather. It's been rescheduled to February 26 at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. On February 19, there's a citizen government review committee meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building, First floor conference room located at 620 Southeast Madison Street. And then on the February 18th governing body agenda, we have one presentation for the 2025 strategic goals and priorities. We have one noise exception on the consent agenda. We have a public hearing and ordinance for the Auburn Washburn annexation. We have four resolutions coming out of the P.I. committee for various projects. And we have approval of the governing body and rules procedure amendment. It relates to virtual voting application to accommodate our new voting board that's coming. And then we have a resolution to update our community improvement district CID policy, our tax increment finance TIF district policy, and then our rural housing incentive, reinvestment housing incentive district, the RHAD policy amendment. And then we have one discussion regarding the renaming and dedicating the water treatment plant as the Jack Alexander Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to announce that as of, or not as of, but tomorrow we're going to close our city offices in anticipation of the snow event. Essential personnel still need a report to their work locations. Any employees who can telecommute need to do so, but the, we'll be closing city offices tomorrow. Along the, along the lines of the snow event, our public works crews have done a good job as far as being prepared. They've, over the weekend, they started pre-treating our collector's streets, and we'll be ready in the event that something big happens. If we do have to go into, keep in mind, as briefed during our February 4 debrief, we shared that, that our policy is to go into neighborhoods if we receive six or more inches of snowfall within a 24-hour period. In the event that that does happen, we do have additional contractor resources available to us. During the last event, we actually put out an emergency request for proposals, and the team was actually able to gain another contractor. So our existing contractor, Sunflower, I think at one point had given us up to seven vehicles. This additional contractor would allow us for another six vehicles to help in those efforts in the event that we have to go there. So I just wanted to share that with the governing body. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Miller?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to piggyback on that just a second because I'm reminded that what the staff had said was that if we were going to have another snow event like this and thought that it would get anywhere near having to deal with residential, that we would encourage all of our downtown parkers to get in the garage. And I know that those arrangements have already been made. Garages are going to be open tomorrow, I think tomorrow and Thursday for people to park in, so they're off the street and the streets can be cleared. And the same request was to go to all residential folks to figure out a way to get their cars off the street so that our equipment can get through both the streets as well as the cul-de-sacs and the corners. So encourage everybody for that. Other than that, I just want to reiterate from the invocation remarks, just how much I appreciate what everybody's doing, governing body and the staff and the citizens to make this city work. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind District Two folks about parking in the street. If you want your streets cleaned, same thing, different, same song, different verse. Everybody stay safe. Happy Valentine's Day. And on a more somber note, I definitely have concerns, you know, concerns if you look at the history of the city of Topeka, you know, there seems to be a penchant for lawsuits and a lot of tax money, taxpayer money spent on it. And some of it, I believe just myself, that it's questionable, and I have concerns about it now. I also have concerns after reading the Kansas Reflector article on what to me felt like punitive measures on finding the lawyer. And I profess not to be a lawyer. That, that question did come up. I asked staff, you know, stated that that was good protocol, but I am dubious about it because again, it felt punitive and it is taxpayer dollar. And then the other thing, City Manager, I appreciate, you know, you listening to me get upset about the lack of movement on the south end of, I'm sorry, the north end of the Sardu Bridge with the increasing issues that, that we have there with very longstanding, longstanding encampments. Again, this is not being hard-hearted. This is listening to my constituents and their fed upness. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me on that because it's coming directly from District Two folks. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a reminder, take care of yourself, take care of your neighbors, take care of your pets with the snowfall and the cold weather. You know, make sure the space heater is being used appropriately. Make sure you're taking breaks in between the shoveling, if you have to shovel. Make sure your footing's there. And then again, make sure you take care of your pets. You know, some people may say they're outside animals, but they need that warmth also. So please take care of yourself, your neighbors, and your pets.
Councilman Miller?
Councilman Me, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Nothing.
Councilman Duncan?
Just one quick thing. I don't think it'll close until March, but we're working on selling one of our land bank properties for someone who's going to develop it. That'll be the first one of what I hope is many, but it's moving along, and so good work by that board and what our goals are. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer?
I'd like to thank two of my constituents for writing last week. Sometimes we get invitations, sometimes we get complaint letters, but I had Alma and Ray Stanton write me. One is in fifth grade and one is in seventh grade, and they both had two very valid questions. One was asking about the sidewalks on 10th Street, and Public Works Director is going to look into that for them. And the other one had a question about the ban shell at Gage Park, and that's forwarding on to the Gage Park Authority, and they're going to check on it. She suggested where they have graffiti and the concrete disintegrating, that a mural would be nice. So I appreciate them taking the time to bring those up, and it's nice to have somebody their age interested in what's going on in town and taking the time to write us. So thank you to Ray and Alma. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement. I try to recognize the cultural events that happen in the city. I'm fortunate enough to get invitations to most of those. I just want to thank Ms. Lassiter since she's here today. I got an opportunity to go to the Discovery Center to celebrate Rosa Parks Day, and she was kind enough to bring the Academy Choir there, who I like to adopt and have said is the mayor's choir. They are a fantastic group of young men and women who not only are talented, but they really remind you about what we're trying to do in this community. And Ms. Lassiter and her work with the Academy is to be appreciated and recognized. I want to thank the youth that showed up because it's always a pleasure to have them present. But that is another part of the, of the makeup of the city of Topeka that sometimes we don't get a chance to recognize. Oftentimes, we get caught up in our own lives and our own highlights, but when we get a chance to see others performing in a way that makes our community stronger and diverse, I appreciate the opportunity to bring it to everyone's attention. There is a need for two executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney will read for the first, please.
Motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving an individual employee is allowed under KSA 7543-19P1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the city council chambers. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the governing body in its discussion. City Manager Perez, John Deardoff, and anyone else deemed necessary.
Okay. You've heard the need for the first of our executive sessions. There's a motion to recess into executive session. There's a motion to recess into executive session. Thank you. Councilwoman Dobler, second by Councilwoman Hofer. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will recess and go immediately into executive session. No breaks. Okay, we've completed our discussions in the first executive session. No action has been taken. There is a need for a second executive session. If the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 20 minutes to give legal advice on a particular contracting privilege under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 7543-19B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City Attorney Stanley and other staff members needed.
Okay, you've heard the need for our second executive session. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, we will immediately recess into executive session. We've concluded our discussions on the second executive session. No action has been taken. No further business come before this body. This meeting is adjourned.